Hello, everybody. I'll call the 7:30 Town Council meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, exactly. All right. Rule call, Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Blanks.
Here.
Ms. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Davidoff.
Here.
Ms. Fay.
Here.
Mr. Gold is absent. We have Mr. Donatelli as zoning alternate. Ms. Kerrigan. Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Wenigrad. And Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrow. We're going to start with proclamation.
So, we're starting with a really important proclamation. And we're going to follow up by doing some business here, so we're a little change in order. So, I'm just going to get right to the proclamation. Whereas Westmore Park is a 162-acre historic treasured park that was donated to the town of West Hartford in 1973 by Charles and Leila Hunter to enrich the lives of all residents by preserving and promoting nature and environmental education. And whereas the late Bridget Curtin experienced the full meaning of this park and all it had to offer as a beloved member of the Westmore Park community. Whereas the late Bridget Curtin participated in every farm and nature program during the summer and school vacation weeks, loved working with the animals, and especially loved the independence the park provided her and the relationship she developed with all the campers, counselors, and instructors. Bridget was looking forward to becoming a counselor in training and to helping create wonderful experiences and memories for the next generation of campers. And whereas Westmore Park and the town of West Hartford identified a need for three-season open-air teaching space to serve as an outdoor classroom, to improve and enhance Westmore Park's summer camp and school-based eco-adventure program, and to protect campers and students during inclement weather. And whereas the Town Planning and Zoning Commission approved a special use permit for an outdoor classroom on November 6, 2019, the town of West Hartford committed to raising funds for this needed and meaningful addition to the park. And whereas when Bridget's family and friends learned of the effort to raise funds for this three-season outdoor classroom and shelter at the park, they believed this would be a special way that they could help honor Bridget's memory. And whereas the Friends of Bridget Curtin at Westmore Park, established in November 2019, has raised private donations from Friends of Bridget and her family to help cover the costs associated with a new outdoor classroom at the park Bridget loved so much. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that on behalf of the Town Council of West Hartford and the residents of West Hartford, I, Mayor Sherri G. Cantor, do hereby recognize and thank the family and friends of Bridget Curtin for their efforts and contributions for this wonderful and great, meaningful addition to Westmore Park. Thank you so much. Is there any objection to suspending the rules to consider Item 7B out of the scheduled order? Hearing no objections, the rules are suspended. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt Item 7B, a resolution expressing gratitude for donations made to Westmore Park in memory of Bridget Curtin and appropriating funds for the construction of an outdoor classroom.
Motion's been made in second. And Mr. Davidoff, could you just read the last paragraph of the resolution? Sorry, Beth, do you want to just read the... Okay. The last paragraph. With the amount? Sorry. I may be second to last.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. Be it further resolved, the fiscal year 2019-2012 Westmore Park Fund budget is hereby amended, and the amount of the transfer is about $220,000.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. And I think the promised amount is closer to $240,000 or $250,000. So, again, this is a very, very meaningful contribution out of a really, you know, a very, very difficult time for people to come together and do such good is sincerely appreciated. And the joy and shelter that it will give so many students is remarkable and sincerely appreciated. Thank you all again. I think another round of applause and thank you.
Mayor Cantor, members of the council, town residents, friends of Bridget Curtin at Westmore Park, thank you all for this opportunity to speak briefly this evening. Jen and I have been residents of West Hartford for 15 years, and I've always believed West Hartford to be a diverse community dedicated to serving the needs of its residents, a community that demonstrates foresight while maintaining a rich history that reflects the best of our New England character. My family embraced all the town has to offer, feeling very fortunate to enjoy so many friends and wonderful experiences as town residents. On December 17, 2018, an unimaginable tragedy struck our family and affected the entire West Hartford community. The outpouring of support has been nothing short of remarkable and has sustained our family through this very difficult period. When the events of December struck, many people reached out to ask what they could do to support our family and to honor our daughter Bridget. Without hesitation, our response was to support Westmore Park. Bridget loved Westmore. She embraced everything the park has to offer. Bridget was a girl who wasn't afraid to get messy, motivating her fellow campers to get the dirty work done early, like cleaning the weekly cleaning of the farm stalls so they could have fun later. She was hopeful to become a counselor in training when she was old enough and eventually a counselor and instructor. It was that group, the CITs, the counselors and instructors, some of whom are here this evening, and fellow campers who helped guide us toward a project, an outdoor classroom and shelter that would support the programs Bridget loves so much. As we began speaking with the Westmore staff, we quickly learned that they had also identified a similar need. The outdoor classroom will be a multifunctional in its use, an assembly and pickup area for campers, a place to get out of the sun, to take refuge in from a passing summer storm, and to conduct classes and seminars. It will be a beautiful and highly functional structure. Bridget would have been so excited to see this wonderful addition to the park. Thanks to the help and support of our friends, we established the Friends of Bridget Curtin at Westmore Park Fund for the purpose of raising monies to support the construction of this new outdoor classroom. Tonight, with the tremendous support of our community, over 800 discreet donors to date, I am so happy to share that we have raised and transferred $220,000 to the town of West Hartford to move the project forward with the goal of having an outdoor classroom functional by early July. And we continue. And we're not done yet. And our fundraisers will continue until we reach our goal of or surpass $250,000.
While we cannot begin to properly thank everyone who helped make this classroom a reality, we would like to thank special people. To all of our donors who gave to our GoFundMe page, the Feast on the Farm guests, my very generous colleagues from the state capitol, individual donors to Westmore Park in memory of Bridget, our friends, neighbors, and residents of West Hartford, Laura and Dan Moran, Dan and Kelly Clark, and Johnny's Jog, Bridget's friends, fellow campers and CITs, counselors and instructors at Westmore, Tom Daley, Vice President of Mill, Malone, and McBroom, who has donated all of the engineering services for the outdoor classroom, Deb Varan, Tom Tracy Daley, Mary and Chuck Horsie, Helen Turco, Director of Social Services and Leisure Services, Doug Jackson, Chrissy Page of Westmore Park, Tammy Bradley, and Mike Longo from the town of West Hartford, and the West Hartford Planning and Zoning Commission. Of course, we'd also like to thank Mayor Sherri Cantor and the entire West Hartford Town Council. Obviously, this is a very bittersweet moment for Tim and I, and we are very excited to be adding this project to the town. As Tim said, Bridget would be really excited to have the classroom, and we wished you would have the opportunity to be using it, but unfortunately, that won't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you all again. We will go to number three, approval of minutes, Ms. Davidoff.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr.?
Did we vote on Item 7B?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. All those in favor, aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. Number three, Ms. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move approval of the Town Council minutes of 225, 2020.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Number four, the public forum 3B. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did both at the same time. Sorry.
Sorry, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt and approve the public hearing minutes of 211, 2020, in application of the American School for the Dead.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Number four, the public forum section of the Town Council is to speak to something that is not the subject of a public hearing but is on this agenda item, and we request that you state the item that you are speaking to. We do have, we're going to start with the Hartford Foundation is our guest tonight. They had written in to speak prior, and we thought this was actually the best place to put them on the agenda tonight with all that we had to juggle. So, is there any objection to suspending the rules to allow the Hartford Foundation to make a brief presentation? Hearing no objection, the rules are suspended. Please come up and talk. Make sure you introduce yourselves. Thank you.
Mayor Cantor and council.
Begin to the mic. It self-activates, but you have to have it sort of, thank you, so everyone can hear your wonderful presentation.
Mayor Cantor and council. I am Joan Veneman, and I am working with this group. We also have Mickey Orkin, who is going to be talking about the selection committee process of what we are doing, and Terrell Sangabi, who will be talking about the advisory committee. The Hartford Foundation for Public Giving was established in 1925. Excuse me. Its endowment currently is about $1 billion, and it was able to provide grants of almost $38 million last year. In 2018, it held a series of listening tours in the 29 towns and cities it serves in the greater Hartford area. These listening tours led the board to establish a community fund in each of the 29 localities. The initial funding for each is $100,000, of which $50,000 will be available for disbursement initially, and $50,000 will be invested with the income available for grants in the future. The foundation's goal for these community funds are empower residents with resources that will materially improve their communities. People in each community will be able to determine what needs their funds will help finance, local control, encourage broad civic engagement. Residents who have not been involved in their community will be encouraged to join with other residents and learn from them. Diversity of ideas and participation will be encouraged. And, of course, anchor the foundation in the local communities. We have already had several open meetings with town residents. I have participated in two. One was at the Charter Oak International Academy and the other at the Noah Webster Library. Our expectation is that as West Hartford sees what the fund does for our town, it will grow and do even more. Success breeds success. An anonymous donor is so hopeful that he or she has already donated another $100,000. Let's hope it grows up. Mickey?
Thanks, Jim. Hello. So, the process to initiate the West Hartford Community Fund began in the fall. Step one was to form the selection committee, and we three are one of 11 members on the selection committee. We are all volunteers. We are people who live or work in West Hartford and who know the community. We are supported by Megan Burke, who is a Hartford Foundation staff member, who is our liaison to the foundation, and who provides extensive and very valuable support. Our charge is to spread the word about West Hartford Community Fund, its purpose, and to implement an inclusive process to help recruit and ultimately to select members of the first advisory committee. We're looking for an inclusive group of West Hartford residents, people who have different backgrounds, ages, different interests, those who have experience in this kind of process, and those who are new to this kind of process and who would like to learn. They will be learning from people who have experience. And Hartford Foundation also will be providing training for the advisory council. So, there are many, many different opportunities as we move forward. The selection committee developed a short application for interested people to complete. We, the selection committee, will review each application as well as have a follow-up contact with each applicant as we work towards selecting the advisory committee members. Our outreach efforts, as Jim was mentioning, include notices in school newsletters, in faith-based newsletters, on our website. We have a wonderful podcast on weha, we.ha.com. Info sessions at the library, Charter Oak, as Jim had mentioned, many individual conversations as well as emails, trying to spread the word and encourage people to apply. Let's see. We are here to ask the Town Council and all of you for your help to spread the word to a broad range of people who might be interested in being members of this advisory committee and to apply to be part of this. I have some flyers to talk about this. I also have some hard copies of the application so that people can, if they're interested, take a look at these. Maybe I'll leave them over there, as well as online versions. And now, I'd like to turn it over to Terrell.
So, in terms of time commitment for advisory committee members, it's going to be at least a year for up to maximum six years. It will be about one to two hours per month. And in the first advisory committee, rules will be a little bit different than the following ones. Like, the first one will be also setting up the procedures to how will you make decisions about the grants that will be coming your way? How will you evaluate the applications? Setting up the operating procedures. And then after that, once they are set up, it's going to be pretty much making decisions on how will you fund the projects. If anybody's interested, you could make applications in three ways. One is on paper. As Mickey mentioned, we have hard copies today, and they're also available in the library, which you can complete afterwards, and mail it to the address, which is on the website. The website is HFPG, which is Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, hfpg.org/westhartford/CF. Again, that is also on the flyers that we have brought with us today. Another way is you could email the applications to the email address whcommunitiefund@gmail.com. And the third way is you can actually directly go on the website and apply online. When you do the application online, we would suggest that you kind of do the application on a Word document and then copy-paste online so that you don't lose any materials as you're applying for it. The questions are relatively very simple. It's a one-and-a-half-page application, your demographics, the experience that you bring, what interests you might have, do you have one year of time, and very simple questions like that. Our timeline for this is, we are hoping that we will have most of the applications done from now to April 6th is when we will actually start our selection process. There is no solid deadline, but we are encouraging people to start applying as soon as they can. We've already started receiving some, which is pretty encouraging. And then, by May 15th, we, selection committee members, will reach out to the advisory committee, potential advisory commission members, if they have any questions and if there is more information that we would like to learn from them. And we are hoping by June 15th, we would have finalized all the members and so that the work can begin in fall. We are open to taking questions.
Thank you. The, how many members of the advisory? What's the total?
We are looking at about 15 members.
Okay. And once the advisory committee is formed, then can grant applications be accepted? Is it that quick or will it...
So, we are going to let the advisory committee members give them some time to start the operating procedures and also set up the criteria for the evaluation of the funds, and I think then they will start taking an application.
So, will they be determining the minimum and maximum amounts of a grant? Yes. So, not, the Hartford Foundation does not do that? That's up to any individual.
I think there is some guidance that they provide, like not all can go to one. But it's pretty generic in that sense.
Okay. I also thank you all for your time. I'm going to open up to questions, but I also want to take the opportunity to thank Jay Williams and Megan Burke for their leadership and the foresight to actually let communities decide how they want to be supported. I went to an early meeting and was so impressed with the input of our own community and the engagement, but also the commitment of so many people. The Hartford Foundation, as you said, a billion-dollar endowment has made enormous difference in our community, all over, the greater Hartford community and the 29 communities that it impacts. So, any questions for... All right. Are you sure? Yeah? Oh, yes, Jim.
I would like to add one thing, since I see some younger people. We encourage anyone who is over 14 years old or older to join. And so, send in your application if you're at all interested after looking at the information.
I may have to drive them. Thank you so much, and thank you for your flexibility in arranging time to come. It was a little busy, but we appreciate it so much. Thank you for your work. All right. With that... Okay. With that, is there anybody else that has not spoken to something on the agenda that would still like to speak? All right. We will then move to number five, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we place Items 12A and 12B on consent.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Number six, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we adopt an ordinance reducing the number of parking spaces required in a food truck area.
Motion's been made in second. This was the subject of a public hearing about an hour and a half ago. And so, Mr. Davidoff, Mr. Hart, would you like to do a quick summary of this item?
Yes, I can do that, Mayor. Very similar to what I provided at the public hearing. So, we are, I am sponsoring this amendment to our food truck... So, we are, I am sponsoring this amendment to our food truck park ordinance. The ordinance is relatively new. It's only been on the books a couple of years. We don't have any permitted food trucks in place as of yet. We do have one food truck park under, under construction. The applicant is looking to increase seating. Additional seating would require additional parking. Building additional parking at that site would be, would be challenging. For the reasons I mentioned earlier, you know, this is, this would be a new use for the town. Ride-sharing services for entertainment uses have become more prevalent. The location of the park is in close proximity to, to public transit, Connecticut CT Fast Track in particular. For those reasons, I do think it would be appropriate for the council to modify the parking factor in the ordinance to increase the number of seats per parking space. The proposed amendment would increase the number of seats from the factor, excuse me, the factor from three seats to five, and this would increase the number of seats in the new establishment from 72 to 120, which, which is significant. Did want to emphasize, and we had some discussion about this earlier in a public hearing, this amendment would apply to all food truck parks permitted under the ordinance, not just the, the one applicant that we have in front of us right now. Our Town Planning and Zoning Commission did review this and did find unanimously that it's consistent with our plan of conservation development. Similarly, the Capital Region Council of Governments reviewed it under your referral and found no material issues or concerns. So, I am recommending council approval of the proposed amendment. I'm happy to take any additional questions counselors may have.
Thank you. Because this was the subject of a public hearing, I don't think we can do that. I don't know. Am I right?
I'll defer to my colleague. Am I right? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that comments or questions to staff would be appropriate.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions? And we, and this is a roll call vote. So, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think it's important for the record to reiterate that what we're voting on has to do with a particular use, being the food truck area, parking spaces for a food truck area use and not a particular applicant or application that's already been approved. I think that's really important to, to make that distinction, and I think that's why I wanted to comment and highlight that distinction.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. All right. Yep, Mr. Donatelli.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to reiterate what I had said during the public hearing. My concern or my feelings aren't so much against what's being done for the food park, but what's not being done for all the other food service establishments in town, who many are struggling for various reasons. There's been a lot of influx of restaurants, creates a lot more competition, makes it harder to hire people. So, I would encourage the town to review the ordinance in general for food establishments, because if it can work for this one because of the reasons stated, see if it can work for other restaurants, other food establishment businesses as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donatelli. I will say that there are many shared parking uses that actually we, we approve with less than the required parking because they're shared spaces. So, we, but we will be looking deeper into that in the Economic Community Planning and Economic Development Committee to make sure that we are accommodating and proactive and changing with the times. So, thank you very much for that point. All right. Any other comments or questions? All right. With that roll call, Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Blanks?
Yes, in favor.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Donatelli?
No.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigret?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
It is approved.
Thank you very much. Ms. LeBrow, oh, six, there's a staple here. I'm so sorry. Six B. Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt item 6B, an ordinance amending the schedule permitted main uses for experiential recreation and restaurant facilities.
Motion's been made and seconded, but I understand we have a second motion.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The clerk and other members of the council are in possession of a written substitute. I move the substitute, and I allow Attorney Dodge to summarize.
We need a second. Right? Motion's made a seconded. Mr. Dodge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This amendment is in the form of a substitute, which means that it will essentially replace the ordinance that's before you. We've only done that for the sake of clarity. It makes a few grammatical changes to the ordinance. The most substantive change that was made is the last whereas clause in the original ordinance. And by the way, I'm sorry, with the documents that were circulated, there's also a redline markup, just for everybody's convenience to look at. But the, the only, the most significant change is that the final whereas clause contained information that really more properly belonged in the enacting clause. And it was also drafted upon further review somewhat imprecisely, refers to an amended schedule that will not be amended until we actually enact the ordinance. And so, Madam Mayor, we've drafted this as a substitute. Again, this will replace the ordinance that's before you. In my opinion, this is technical and non-substantive and does not change the purpose of the ordinance. And so, if you adopt the amendment and then adopt the ordinance as amended, you may take final action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions regarding the substitute ordinance? Procedurally? Okay. Now, any other questions on the, the ordinance as, as was presented in the?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The amendment needs to be voted on before the bill is debated.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. It's on the table. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Any comments about the, this item that was the subject of the, of public hearing? And I don't know, Mr. Hart, do you want to just do a brief summary of what was in the public hearing for people that were not here?
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide a very brief summary. And then any additional questions that you might have, we can invite Ms. Gorsky to come forward as well. So, we're also seeking an amendment to a relatively new ordinance here. The town council, you adopted this a couple of years ago. It was an effort to permit a growing segment of the retail market, experiential recreation and, and restaurants. You know, the, the various examples of that are listed here. So, to address this, we had crafted various definitions for indoor recreation, amusement facility, excluding nightclubs as well as theater establishments. Applicants coming in here under this ordinance would need a special use permit to operate as an experiential recreation and restaurant facility, and they would be required to obtain an entertainment license from the police department. The hours of operation, those restrictions would not change. They could not, could not operate between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM. When the council reviewed this back in 2017, in the fall of 2017, you voted to remove the BG zone from, from consideration. After a couple of years of review or experience with this, you know, staff feels as though if you were to expand the ordinance to encompass the BG zone, that would facilitate, potentially facilitate some development opportunities in certain locations of town, which we discussed earlier. So, that's why this amendment is in front of you. The Community Planning Committee did review it in January. They voted in favor of endorsing this, advancing this. We did get favorable referral responses from both TPZ as well as the Capital Region Council Governments.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. So, I just, I'm going to, we, we had not accepted or permitted the BG zone because there were some concerns at the time with some spaces that we felt like we hadn't really processed. But I, I will say that the, the special use permit, the entertainment license, and the 12 to 5 limit is a process that entertainment establishments would have to go through to have a, the right to operate, and there are protections. And, and so, I do feel that it is a little bit, it's easier to understand how the process might work and, and the protections and how that might work. And many of our commercials, our zones are in residential zones, and that's, that's where the concern came from. I was doing a little reading about reuses of retail space, and there's a new word that I heard about retail-ainment and how that is really the use of so many retail establishments that really need to be creative. And whether it's a Scotch and Shop kind of a, something like that, or a theater with, with alcohol that we have in our, right in Blueback Square, or bowling alleys that we see all popping all, all over the country, trampling parts, et cetera. We have to be creative in using our, our spaces, especially our, our bigger spaces that might not work for retail as, as successfully as they'd have in the past. So, I think this moves us forward. I do want people to understand why we didn't approve it initially, because we weren't, we were a little concerned about the neighborhoods surrounding commercial zones that might fall through the cracks and something that we, we really wanted to process it and make sure that we were protecting our, our neighborhood's quality of life as well as our businesses and their vitality and our vibrancy moving forward. So, any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Donatelli.
Thank you. Not having, because I'm an alternate, sitting in on the initial discussions, when you just mentioned the license from the police department, I just had a question as far as what would cause somebody to lose that if it wasn't going well for that business? What kind of enforcement mechanism?
Well, it would be, you know, a violation of the, the permit requirements. For example, if it was a, a bar-only use, various disturbances that the police need to respond to, et cetera. I don't know if anyone on staff wanted to supplement my, my comment. We are fortunate, we have our police chief here in the room.
Not directly under my purview, the state statute for the nuisance.
And just identify yourself briefly.
Vernon Riddick, the police chief. Is that directly under my purview? The assistant chief, Koppinger, has the information on it, and I was actually texting him, hoping you guys wouldn't ask me this question. But it would be nuisance and abatement at the same time, cause for service, violence, liquor violations, underage drinking, and the like. And there's also the state statute, which escapes me right now, but if you have a number of incidents of violence that occur inside the establishment, you can revoke their overall license and close down the facility. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Donatelli. That's a good question. Okay. Ms. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to vote in favor of this ordinance because I think what it illustrates is a transition from thinking of 2017 to 2020, where we've realized that our retail environment has changed, the needs of our consumers and users have changed. Millennials are expecting different experiences, and our general business districts are probably well-positioned in the, in the right spaces to allow experiential recreation and restaurant facilities. And I think the resolution aptly notes as to why we are considering doing that, and it says it's going to make West Hartford more attractive to such businesses. It will give the facilities more opportunities in West Hartford, and it will provide West Hartford residents with more convenient access to these facilities. So, basically, it's a win-win for potential economic development and improve the quality of life and experiences of those who call West Hartford home and as well as those who like to visit our community. So, for all those reasons, I'll be supporting the ordinance this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. Ms. Blanks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I just have one question around the permitted hours, and I'm just curious, the 12 to 5, does that mean that the operation need to shut down prior to 12, or are they just allowed to shut everything down at 12 and then cease? So, everybody needs to be out of there?
Yes.
May I follow up?
Yes, Ms. Blanks.
Okay. So, I do like this ordinance, and I'll be supporting it because I do feel as though we are sort of oversaturated with the number of restaurants in town, and I know we have a lot of vacant spaces, and I personally would like to see a mix of other things coming into town. And I think some of these things that we've discussed that would be a nice fit would bode well, especially in a lot of our community type of neighborhoods, in particular, the old Shop Right building. I live close to that area, and I think it's heavily populated with young people, so I think such as a bowling alley or perhaps a, similar to a running role, so a roller skating rink with some adult attraction would fit very well. So, I will be voting in favor of this.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Any other comments, questions? Ms. Fay?
Thank you, Mayor Cantor. You know, I, I think a lot of times West Hartford is ahead of the curve in terms of trends and things that are happening, but in this case, I've had the benefit of living in other places, and Boston comes to mind. And back 15 years ago, we had the bowling alleys, and Todd English was the chef in the bowling alley, and exquisite cocktails, and lights, and music, and the whole nine yards, there's Jillian's, if any of you have been up there. But the thing about these, these facilities that, it's not just for millennials, which I think we need to encourage people to stay here and realize that Connecticut has fun things to do and, and things that bigger cities has, but they're really used by people of all ages. So, you go into a place like that, and you'll see grandparents taking their teenage grandchildren there, as an example, for something better than just a cheeseburger and fries at a bowling alley. You get something, you know, much nicer than that. And companies use them quite extensively for team-building activities, because their workforce is very diverse and, and wide ranges of age. So, I would absolutely be in support of this. I think they're fun. I think they're attractive to not just millennials, but all ages, and they're just a lot of fun, and it would be a nice addition for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Anybody else? All right. With that, we will do a roll call vote. Ms. LeBrow?
Ms. Blanks?
Yes.
Ms. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Davidoff?
Yes.
Ms. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Donatelli?
Yes.
Ms. Kerrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Mr. Wenigret?
Yes.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Number seven, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we receive the 2021 fiscal year budget as proposed by the town manager and superintendent of schools, which will be introduced shortly, and set for public hearing on Tuesday, March 31st, 2020, at 2:00 PM, and Monday, April 6th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the legislative chamber.
Motion's been made a seconded. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mayor. Take me a moment or two to boot up here.
Mr. Hart, while you're booting up, it's not on our board docs that I can see, so will we be getting an electronic copy?
You will.
Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. Got it.
[music] 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 [music]
Thank you, Joanna. Good evening, Town Council. Pleased to present the proposed budget for next fiscal year to you. This is my budget proposal. It's the superintendent of schools' budget proposal as well as the proposal from our leadership and management team. Many of them are here with us here this evening. So in preparing, in preparing the proposed budget, you know, what's our charge? What are we trying to achieve? You know, it's something that we take very, very seriously. You know, we provide a strong set, strong portfolio of services here in West Hartford. At the same time, we are cognizant of the impact that property taxes have on our taxpayers. So we have worked really hard to prepare what we see as a responsible budget proposal. You know, the one that's designed to maintain our services and our programs that are very important to the quality of life here in our town and to our standing, West Hartford's standing as one of the premier, premier communities in the nation, not just in the state of Connecticut, but in the nation. Some I would highlight, our award-winning school system. Our award-winning school system, our high schools are in the top 2% of high schools nationwide. Our public safety units, we have a full-service public safety component of police and fire. Our police department has done a fabulous job for us. Crime is down significantly from 2018. We recently, a couple of years ago, we implemented advanced life support service. Our fire department is responsible for that. Our response times, if there is a call, if there's a fire, if there's a medical need, we are at your house in 5 minutes and 30 seconds. That is an absolutely amazing response time compared to many of our neighbors. And we also offer a very broad portfolio of community services, including some regional assets such as Westmore Park, which we heard about earlier this evening, Rockledge Golf Course and others. Secondly, we've absorbed, we've structured the budget, excuse me, to absorb some significant cost increases in a couple of key areas. You know, one I would mention is the MDC sewer tax, otherwise known as the ad valorem. Insurance, we're seeing an increase in various insurances for next year, which we will talk about in a couple of minutes. Overtime, overtime particularly with respect to public safety, we feel as though we've been underfunding in recent years and it's time to make a correction there. Recycling is a new cost that we need to absorb as well. And we are trying to do this in a responsible manner. We're trying to absorb these costs without driving the tax rate too high, but at the same time, without creating a situation where we would have a structural deficit and have bigger problems years down the road. A third objective here is we've structured the budget to maintain our long tradition of strong and prudent financial management. This is something West Hartford is well-known for. This is one of the reasons why we have our AAA bond rating and we've received it year after year for decades. This budget maintains our fund balance at 9.1%, very important to the rating agencies. The pension, the pension, I think the council is well-aware of the fact that the pension is underfunded. We have been working hard to increase those funding levels. At the same time, we need to be cognizant of the discount rate to ensure that we're able to realize the projected asset growth. So this budget supports a multi-year plan to lower that discount rate to what we see as a more realistic and prudent level. So we are recommending that the discount rate be lowered by an eighth of a point here from 7.125 to 6.99. The budget also continues to fund OPEB, other post-employment benefits, in accordance with our actuaries' recommendations. Moving on, other key policy objectives, other key considerations in structuring this budget. Through our capital improvement plan, which we're also presenting to you here this evening, we're going to continue to make strategic investments in our infrastructure. We have a wide portfolio of infrastructure here in West Hartford, town facilities, school buildings, recreational assets, roads, bridges, et cetera. Over the coming years, we're going to be making investments, we're proposing investments in school security, roads, bridges, stormwater facilities, which we know is an increasing need, as well as our parks and other recreational facilities. The budget is also structured to help promote sustainable grandlist growth. Grandlist growth is an important priority for the town council. We want to make sure that it's sustainable, something that's suitable for West Hartford. A key example, something that we're looking to champion, is transit-oriented development in the New Park corridor. Another component of the budget, much smaller dollars involved, but could have a significant impact, is promoting placemaking. Placemaking to add more life and vitality here in town, to continue to attract people to come and choose West Hartford as a place to live, as a place to do business. So the budget includes some modest sums to facilitate those types of activities so that we can close a street, for example, for pedestrian activities and promote that vitality that we're seeking. So if we do these things, if we do these things, if we provide these quality services, if we continue to make strategic investments in our infrastructure, if we continue our long tradition of prudent financial management, those things, those things will help to ensure quality of life for our residents and a return on investment for both our residents as well as our other taxpayers. That's why all of those things are important, really. That's really what it all comes down to at the end, is promoting quality of life and return on investment for the folks who live here and the folks who do business here. So now, now moving to the numbers. And I know there's a lot of detail in this slide. You'll get it and you'll have a chance to review this in more significant detail. But in, as a quick snapshot, as an overview, on the expenditure side, and this is just in terms of expenditures, we are recommending a proposed general fund budget next fiscal year of a little over $308.7 million. That represents an increase of $12.2 million or 4.12%. That includes the Board of Education's proposal as well. Here's a quick snapshot of the three major categories in the general fund budget. There would be an increase in town services at 5.75%. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about what's driving that number and we'll talk about it in much more detail when we get to your budget workshops. We've incorporated, I've incorporated the superintendent of schools' proposed budget, which has an increase of 3.48%. And we are seeing a slight savings in capital financing due to a prudent use of a prior year surplus that you authorized. And I think it's another good example of our prudent financial management here. This budget would require a uniform mil rate of 43.3 mils, which would be an increase of 1.5 mils, 3.59%. A 3.59% increase to the mil rate. And there's another snapshot of the budget between the town, the Board of Education, and capital financing. Let's spend a couple of minutes talking about general fund revenues. Then we'll talk about general fund expenditures. On the revenue side, as is true for a long, long period of time, property taxes would provide the bulk of the funding for the proposed budget. And this is true, 88% here next year. And this is consistent with recent years. And it's true for virtually every town or city in Connecticut where property taxes are the primary vehicle to fund local government services. Connecticut is, and I know I've talked about this at some length before, Connecticut is one of the most property tax-reliant states in the country. The next highest category we have is on the intergovernmental side. Those are primarily grants coming from the state in the form of the major statutory grants like education cost sharing. Taking a look at our grandlist, our list of taxable property. We update, and every town in the state does this, we update the grandlist October 1 of every year. So the, excuse me, yes, the October 1, 19 grandlist increased by a little over $52.82 million. And actually, that is the most significant growth we have seen in a non-reval year for a significant period of time. Here's how it breaks down between real estate and personal property and motor vehicles. You can see that real estate increased by 0.55%. Personal property by 2.9% and motor vehicles by 3.5%. The impact, related to the proposed budget, the impact on existing taxpayers. The budget would require a property tax increase of a little under 12 million. The grandlist growth would generate almost $2.2 million in new revenue. So when you subtract that, you are left with a net of $9.75 million. And we would see a percentage tax increase from the prior year of 3.76%. Moving on to talk a little bit about state aid. So we have utilized the governor's proposed budget for our state aid calculations. And that is traditional, where we will incorporate the governor's proposals in our proposed budget. We are seeing an increase, the governor's proposing an increase to the education cost-sharing grant that is the largest single grant that the town receives of a little under $424,000. We would see an increase to our dial-a-ride grant of a little over $62,000, much more modest adjustment to town aid road, an increase to the Youth Services Bureau grant as well, which would go directly to the Bridge Family Services, which provides a variety of teen and counseling services for the town. Total state aid, here's the recent trend. As you can see, there's some fluctuation throughout the years, but it's been relatively consistent the last couple of years. So moving on from revenues to talk about general fund expenditures. The proposed budget for, on the town side of the budget would be an increase of $6.35 million, again, 5.75%. For the Board of Ed, it would be an increase of almost $5.9 million, 3.48%. Capital financing, we would see a slight decrease. Recommended expenditure of 17, approximately 17.3 million. Again, that brings us to our total of $308.7 million, an increase of approximately $12.2 million or 4.12%. Taking a look at how expenditures break down just among those three large categories. The Board of Education, and this is true for every town in the state where the Board, the pre-K through 12 school district expenditures typically constitute the majority of spending for any town in the state. West Hartford, it's been relatively consistent in recent years at 57% or thereabouts. In some of the smaller towns, this number will be much higher. It will be well into the 80s. The town side of the budget, 38% of the proposed general fund and capital financing at 5%. But you can see how important the school district is in terms of its impact on the overall budget. Now looking just at the town side of the budget, here's a, here's a quick snapshot and you can see the breakdown between wages and salaries at approximately $44 million. You can see fringe benefits at $45.2 million. That's fringe benefits plus insurance. And operating expenditures at a little under $27.5 million. Breaking it down a little bit further, you can see how the expenditures on a percentage basis compare from everything from public works down through education, again, at 57% of the proposed general fund budget. Here's a little more detail when you look at our larger departments, our larger programs, community development, public works, public safety, education, et cetera. The largest expenditures on the town side being public safety, the non-departmental category as well. So now let's talk for a couple of minutes about the primary budget drivers. What's driving this budget on the expenditure side? As well as some of the mitigation strategies that we've been following, some for a period of years now. The first one I would highlight is our sanitary sewer service provided by the Metropolitan District Commission. We are seeing an increase of a little under, a little over, excuse me, $793,000 here, 6.93%. If you look at the past eight years, you can see back in 2014 at almost $7.3 million compared to the proposal for next year at a little under $12.3 million. That's an increase of roughly 70%, 70% over an eight-year period. How are we seeking to address this? I think as the council knows, West Hartford has been a leader in advocating that the MDC convert from a user fee, excuse me, convert from the ad valorem method to a user fee, which is similar to what they use to finance water service. And the user fee is the norm. It's the norm nationwide and it's the most environmentally responsible thing to do. That's what we have been pushing the MDC to move towards for many, many years now and will continue to do so. Another strategy that we're supporting, and this is one that's recommended by the MDC. You'll recall, you recently decided to support the MDC's integrated plan to finance its very large and very important clean water project. Under the integrated plan, they would intend, the MDC would intend to use water revenues and would be less reliant on the ad valorem tax. So the integrated plan, if it's approved by DEEP, the impact to the ad valorem would not be as significant as what's currently contemplated. So those are important things that we need to continue to work on as it relates to the MDC. Moving on to the pension. So every year, we need to budget what's called the actuarially determined employer contribution, or ADEC, previously known as the ARC. For next fiscal year, we're going to see an increase of a little over $963,000. Looking at the ratio, the funded ratio of the pension fund, I talked earlier about the fact that the pension fund is underfunded. I think the council is well-aware of that, well-aware of the reasons. For many years, we've been working to increase the funding levels. Adjusting the discount rate is an important consideration here as well as funding, funding what the actuaries tell us to fund. So if the discount rate, and we understand what's going on with the market right now, if we're able to meet the asset growth projections, we would see an increase in the funded ratio over the next 10 years along the lines of what's described here. The year-to-year over increase, this is a projection, again, based at that discount rate and meeting those asset growth returns. But the year-to-year over increase should decrease in coming years if we're able to meet those targets. How are we working to continue to address this issue? It's important to adjust the discount rate, as we've recommended here. We'll continue to look at plan design changes, negotiate plan design changes with our unions several years ago. The town did implement a hybrid pension plan for The town did implement a hybrid pension plan for non-public safety hires. That includes a DB component as well as a DC component. It is much more affordable for the employer, for the town. We are beginning to see the benefits of that, and will continue to see those benefits in the future, the fact that it is less costly for the town. And the town has been a leader in creating and establishing that hybrid pension plan. And then lastly, we're going to continue to look at alternate funding models for the pension. You know, we're going to explore those. We looked at it in some depth a year or so ago. We're going to bring that back to the Finance and Administration Committee. Another primary budget driver relates to our insurance programs, and we're seeing an increase to health insurance. This includes the health insurance we provide to our retirees. We've got increases to the heart and hypertension benefits that we provide to certain public safety retirees, workers comp as well. We're seeing a increase of a little over $1.4 million here. What are we doing to address it? Health insurance in particular is going up, I think, at approximately 7 percent. Believe it or not, that is not a bad number when you look at public sector employers around the state, but it does have a significant impact here. So we're going to continue to competitively bid our insurance plans on a regular cycle to ensure that we get the best rate for the town, and we're going to continue to negotiate plan design changes on the health insurance that we provide to our employees. Moving on to the next item, this relates to wages and salaries, an increase of a little under $1.7 million. This is somewhat inflated by approximately, I think, $300,000 or so. And that is because we recently, within the past year, we settled the contract with our firefighters, and we had been carrying a wage adjustment in contingency. So when you make this move, to some extent, it artificially inflates the wages and salary lines. We can talk about that in more detail when we get to your budget workshops. Some of the key factors here, we have, we've built in the contractual wage increase for police and fire. We are still negotiating with our non-public safety unions. I mentioned earlier the retroactive wage adjustment for the firefighter's settlement. We're proposing two and only two new positions next fiscal year. These would be full-time positions replacing part-time employees. One would be a paralegal in corporation counsel's office. That's a position we had in the past, we think is warranted. The second would be an office support specialist, a third administrative person in building inspection. That office processes thousands, thousands of permits in a given year. The workload has increased in recent years. It's very important to us that we turn our permits around in a timely way, and we think this position is justified as well, and look forward to discussing it with you in more detail. A couple of other key factors here is that we're recommending that we move the funding. Right now, we're charging one full-time police officer to the parking lot fund. A couple of years ago, we were charging two. We moved one back to the general fund already. This budget proposes that we move the second from the parking lot fund to the general fund, out of the police budget. We are recommending an increase in overtime for the fire department based on historical trends, and I'm going to get into that in a little bit more detail in a moment. And we need to be able to adjust the increase in the state's minimum wage, so that has an adjustment to temporary payroll. So I wanted to spend a moment or two just talking about the fire department's budget, and particularly as it relates to the firefighter division, and what we see as the need to increase that overtime appropriation. I will start by noting that the last couple of years, we have seen a very significant number of retirements in the fire department, the police department as well. We hired a lot of public safety personnel 20 to 25 years ago, and they are now eligible to retire. What this graph shows is that we were relatively close, we were relatively close to meeting our projections. This compares the adopted budget with actual expenditures. And as you can see from the graph, the columns generally match. So you may ask, why is that? If you had so many vacancies, if you had so much turnover, why are these numbers so close? So here's a key reason why, and that relates to separation pay. Our more senior, our more senior employees, particularly those in public safety, when they retire, they are eligible to cash out certain forms of leave. And with the significant number of retirements we've had in recent years, you know, the numbers in aggregate have been significant. Now, we have already negotiated changes to those benefits. New hires, when they retire, are not going to receive the same thing, but our more senior folks are eligible for these benefits, and it has been a cost driver for us. And we've been relying on the salary account to fund these costs. We've also been relying on savings in other parts of the budget to cover the expenditures, and it's becoming increasingly difficult to do this. So this slide is a comparison of the overtime expenditures in the firefighting division, just the firefighting division. And you can see the comparison from the adopted budget, the blue columns, to actual expenditures, the orange columns. And you can see how much higher the actuals exceeded what we budgeted over the last number of years here. You know, we've tried to keep this line item relatively flat at approximately $1.4 million. We've done that because of the budget pressures we're facing, the budget pressures you're facing. We know that we're trying to control expenditures here, we're concerned about the tax rate. But we do think an increase, we are recommending an increase here of a little under, going up to a little under $1.8 million. We think that would be the responsible thing to do so that we can better manage this expenditure. And we will have an opportunity, when we get to your budget workshops, the chiefs will have an opportunity to explain this to you in more detail and to take your questions, hear your concerns, et cetera. But I wanted to spend a couple of minutes on it because we think it's a very important Another major budget driver here, solid waste and recycling. We're seeing an increase in the disposal of recycling materials at $670,000, an increase in our solid waste. This relates to the tipping fees to the facility that we bring our waste to, Covanta in Bristol, as well as a more modest increase to cover disposal costs related to our new and successful yard waste program. I want to spend a moment or two on recycling. Not so long ago, recycling was a revenue. It was a revenue for West Hartford, it was a revenue for municipalities across the state, across the country. The markets have changed significantly the last couple of years, it's now an expenditure. And we are required to comply with the state's recycling laws. We need to continue recycling. We think it's obviously the environmentally responsible thing to do, but it's coming at a cost. And you see for the current year, $87,000, $87,500. Next year, a cost of $670,000. So this is a significant new expenditure that we need to absorb in the proposed budget. It's helped driving the overall budget. In terms of mitigation strategies, what are we doing about it? How are we trying to address this one? Well, we're going to continue our public education and our pilot programs. You know, we have some new part-time staff working on this issue. That will be important to reduce the volume of our waste. If we're able to reduce our waste, manage it more efficiently, our tip fee costs will be lower. Related to that, we have a capital project on the books to expand our transfer station. We do not have a full-service transfer station here in West Hartford. We're only able to take a limited number of materials. We would like to expand what we can take in so that we can better manage our waste, so that folks aren't putting things in the trash bins that they shouldn't be putting in their trash bins, which are driving up our tip fees. You know, we feel as though if we have that facility available, it could help lower our costs long-term. And we think it's important that we continue to talk about service delivery options here, not to do something in a knee-jerk fashion, but to examine the options in a deliberate way through council committee. Moving on to the Board of Ed, again, an increase of a little under $5.9 million, 3.48 percent. Here are some of the significant drivers here. There's an increase in salaries, this relates to settled collective bargaining agreements. On the employee benefit side, the Board of Ed has been able to do some very good work. Moving into the state partnership plan, a lot of those savings are related to retiree expenditures as well, but the increase there is $590,000 approximately. All other expenses, transportation and other, an increase of approximately $1.91 million. You will have an opportunity to review the Board of Ed budget in a little bit more detail when the Education Liaison Committee meets in a few weeks. So that's the general fund budget, revenues and expenditures. Let's talk for a couple of minutes now about our capital improvement program. We prepare each and every year a 12-year plan for the council's consideration. I want to focus for a few minutes on years one and two. Those are very important because those are the years we commit to under our very robust plan. On the top half of the slide here, you see the major funding categories, and as is true for many, many years now, most of the financing would come in the form of long-term debt, general obligation bonds. And that is why that bond rating is so important to us, that is why it is so important, so critical, that we continue to manage things in a prudent way. The next category, some of the projects would be funded through the capital non-recurring expenditure fund budget. We received some grants, we have only built in those grants that have received, we will receive others along the way that will help adjust these expenditures. There's also another column here that relates primarily to transfers coming from other funds, whether it's the Westmore Park Fund, Parking Fund, what have you. The lower half of the page, these are the major expenditure categories, and you see everything from transportation and infrastructure through rolling stock. So for the next two fiscal years, a total proposed expenditure of approximately $45.6 million, a little under $21 million in the first year, and a little under $25 million in the second year. Here's an example of some of the key projects in those first two years. The Fern Street Bridge needs to be replaced. We anticipate receiving some grant funding to assist with this, but we have built in $4.2 million in year two for this project. Street resurfacing, something we do each and every year. This expenditure over both years one and two, a little over $3 million. We are striving to resurface or reconstruct up to 10 miles of road per year. Recall, this is something in the past. That is the benchmark we should be hitting. Over the past several years, due to budget constraints, we have been completing closer to seven to eight miles of road a year. We want to get to the $10 million mark, and this plan contemplates that. On the education side, the focus, the first two years would be school security. The district has done, I think, a very good job building out security improvements across the system. This would largely complete what they need at $3.7 million, and we anticipate some grant funding for those projects too. Couple of important town projects. We have an indoor police shooting range, it's a very valuable asset, actually. Many communities struggle to find and locate an appropriate range. Ours needs to be upgraded. We're recommending $750,000 over the first two years of the plan. Our animal shelter, our animal shelter is decades old, no longer meets current standards. We have another project on the books to upgrade that as part of the larger Brixton Street Complex project. On the government operations side, modernizing our recycling center, I talked earlier about our hope, our goal, our goal to build a more full-scale transfer station, if you will, so that we can take a wide variety of waste and manage it more efficiently and effectively. So those are the first two years. Looking at the 12-year plan, the 12-year plan totals a little under $262 million. These are the major revenue sources. You can see how important the general obligation bonds are to this plan. The next highest category is anticipated federal and state grant. How does a 12-year CIP break down on the expenditure side? Most of the money, most of the money for the recommended 12-year plan would go towards our education system, and they have a very sizable inventory number of schools. The next highest category is transportation and infrastructure. Moving on to the impact on the taxpayer, we talked earlier about the increase of 1.5 mils, then that would be an increase on a percentage basis of 3.59 percent. How would that impact the average taxpayer here in West Hartford? And this is our effort to quantify that, this is something we do each and every year. So the average single-family home here in West Hartford has an assessed value, this is not the fair market value, this is the assessed value at 70, of a little under $227,000. The average taxpayer also has two vehicles assessed at a little under $9,300. So this taxpayer right now is paying $10,263 in property taxes. Under this budget proposal, they would see an increase of $369 for a total of $10,632. How would that tax bill break down? So here's the tax bill of approximately $10,600, and you can see how it breaks down on a percentage basis. Everything from community development through education, again, the education is 57 percent of the proposed budget. Some of the other more substantial categories, this non-departmental is large, as well as public safety. Moving forward, your review, you're receiving the budget tonight, you know, you're going to be reviewing it over the next month and a couple of weeks. Something new we are looking to do this year with your support, and I want to applaud you for supporting this. We're going to review the budget with you as a committee of the whole. So the Finance and Administration Committee, that will be the official forum, if you will, but the entire council will be invited to those meetings. And we're going to focus on the big issues. We're going to focus on the major cost drivers that I talked about tonight. We're going to focus on the major policy discussions, as opposed to talking more or less about more minor adjustments to individual line items. We think this format will be beneficial, it'll promote transparency, it'll give you a better understanding of the entire budget, and it will allow you to focus on the big picture. So you've got a couple of key workshops planned, one on the 18th, one on the 31st. We also have some public hearings built in here, the Special Services District, that met earlier tonight at 6:30. The district will hold a public hearing regarding its proposed budget at 6:30 on the 24th. The council, you always hold two public hearings, you hold one in the daytime and one in the evening in order to maximize attendance. We have the one public hearing, the daytime public hearing scheduled for 2:00 p.m. on March 31st, the evening public hearing scheduled for April 6th at 6:00 p.m., and you would look to adopt a budget by April 20th. On the Board of Education side, the board is also busy reviewing the superintendent's proposed budget. You see the dates for the two workshops they have here, as well as their public hearing, and the board will look to adopt its budget on April 7th. So just a very brief recap before I close. I know this is probably the single most important thing the council does in any given year, is adopt a proposed budget and capital improvement program. I know how seriously you take it, and we take it very seriously as well, as a management team, as a leadership team. We've structured this budget, so we think it's a highly, highly responsible budget. It's consistent with our tradition of financial management excellence. We're not looking to rely on one-time revenues where we would face structural deficits in the future. We really want to try to limit that to the extent possible. Secondly, this budget is designed to maintain the programs, services, and infrastructure that help make West Hartford great, that help us make the community we are, with our award-winning school district, with our full-service public safety departments, some of the premier recreational assets in the region and in the state, to fund our strong portfolio of community services. We feel as though these things are very important to our community. These quality services, the strategic investments in our infrastructure, our good financial management helps, helps to provide quality of life and return on investment for our residents and our taxpayers. That completes my presentation, Mayor. I'd like to thank the members of our budget team here in the audience, as well as our leadership and management team. Many of them are here tonight. They have spent countless hours working on this, and I want to thank them for their work to date. We know that we have more work to do when you review this, and we look forward to the opportunity to discuss the budget in more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. And your questions will go into workshops, and as well as comments will be received at the scheduled public hearings that were on the schedule. So we will now move. Thank you, all for all. I'll see many, many department heads here. Thank you for being here, and thank you, Mr. Hart. You're back on with your reports from the town manager, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor. It's going to take me one moment to boot up here. So moving on, moving on to my report, first, I would like to welcome some new hires that filled some very important vacancies. First, Patty Lewis. We have hired Patty to fill our finance and budget manager position in the finance department. Todd Matt is a new employee as well, working as the business operations manager in Public Works. And last, but certainly not least, Jerida Reinheimer. Jerida, if you could stand briefly. Jerida is the executive assistant in the town manager's office. I think she's had an opportunity to meet many, if not all, of you, and she's been with us for a couple of weeks, and is really, really doing a very good job helping me out, supporting the mayor and others, and she will be a very critical component of our management team. So welcome, Jerida. Welcome, Todd, and welcome, Patty. Under council business and meetings, I've listed the two meetings that you will have between tonight and your next regular meeting. Moving on to staff reports, coronavirus, COVID-19. This is something that's on everyone's mind, right, worldwide, and not just here in the U.S. And I want to share with you a little bit about the work we've been doing and the work we're planning to do in the coming weeks. I'll send you an update, or excuse me, I'll provide an update at each council meeting, but much more frequently by email, and hopefully you've been receiving our communications. So the town and our school district, we're working in partnership with the West Hartford Bloomfield Health District. We have a regional health district that supports both communities to mitigate the impact here. But our best defense, as I think the CDC and others have talked about, against the spread of the disease, is really relying or encouraging individuals to take proper precautions and preparations. So we've been sending out numerous messages to this effect, emphasizing the importance of washing hands early and often in a very thorough way, avoiding close contact with people who are sick, staying home when you're sick. Many of us are warriors, myself included, who tend to come to work when we're sick. We can't do that. We've got to think about our colleagues. We're cleaning and disaffecting our workspaces on a regular manner. Our facilities, plant and facilities department is providing materials to both town staff and our school facility staff so that we can assist with this effort. Our custodial staff cannot handle it alone. You know, they need support with this, so regular employees are pitching in. We've created a web page, hopefully you've all seen it, for residents to get more information. The web address is www.westhartfordct.gov/covid19. The best sources of information, the ones we link to, are those provided by the CDC and the Connecticut Department of Public Health. So the governor and state agencies conducted a conference call yesterday at 5:00 p.m. and invited all 169 towns and all 180-something school districts to listen in. The mayor joined me, as did many of our directors, and the governor, and his department has provided us with an update. And as part of their update, they strongly recommended that we cancel or postpone any public event where we'd see a gathering of 100 or more people. Any event where people would get together in close proximity, maybe shoulder to shoulder, both indoors or outdoors, really should be canceled as a preventative measure to stopping the spread of the virus. So both the town and the school district, we plan to follow the state's recommendations, and we are canceling those major upcoming events on both the school side and the town side through April. And we need to go beyond that, but right now, we're focused through April. Some of these events are very significant. We understand how important they are to our community. Our public schools has canceled its annual Pops and Jazz concert for this coming weekend, canceled the West Hartford Cooking fundraiser scheduled for the end of this month. We're also, we've contacted outside agencies that were planning to hold meetings in our facilities, Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, an orchid show, Jody's Jog, things that we're going to be holding this month. Those have been canceled, and I want to take this opportunity to strongly urge community organization, houses of worship, and others in our communities to really take the governor's advice to heart and to look to cancel or postpone these large gatherings, and if you cannot, for some reason, to work very hard to put appropriate protocols in place. There are a few key other items under the report, Mayor. I'll touch on more quickly in the interest of time. The Spring Yard Waste Collection Program will be resuming soon, beginning on April 6th. Yard Waste Collection will run the same day as recycling. Our North Main Street Bridge Project is underway. We've started excavation, so we had to reduce the travel lanes from four to two. Motorists should seek alternative routes to the extent to which they can. The census, census day is rapidly approaching. We have a complete count committee in place that's been doing really good work. If folks haven't seen it, I would encourage you to check out the public service announcements that we prepared, not just in one, not just in two, not just in three, but in eight different languages, in an effort to reach our neighbors of different cultures. Really a fabulous job. Would encourage you to view them on YouTube. There are a couple of other items under the report, Mayor, that councillors can look at at your leisure. I'll wrap up now and take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions for the town manager, Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly on the shutting down of events, so the town's doing that up to April 1st as of right now?
Thank you for the question. No, through the end of April.
Okay.
And then we may need to extend that further. If I can take a moment or two more, Mayor. This is a very fluid and dynamic situation. Things are changing daily, as you know, sometimes hourly. I want to credit, I should have done this earlier, forgive me, I want to credit our staff for working long and hard on this issue, and it's going to continue to dominate our workday, probably for weeks to come. We have an acting director of public health, Amy Kraus, acting director, doing an absolutely fabulous job. Our fire chief, Greg Priest, our police chief, Vern Riddick, our public relations specialist, Renee McHugh, other members of the fire department, such as Assistant Chief Hugh O'Callahan, Captain Jared Smith, our emergency management specialist, part-time, Bob McHugh, putting lots of time and effort, and I think really shows the benefits, and I want to thank you for supporting the creation of that position. This issue, you know, we're trying not to instill panic, but at the same time, we've got to take it very, very seriously, and we're going to be spending a lot of time on it over the coming weeks, and would encourage the community to stay tuned to our announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I thank you, Mr. Hart. Any other questions, town manager? No? Well, I hesitate to announce any announcements because they're all going to be canceled, I think. Women's Corral, 200 women, I don't know. I mean, they're going to be at Conner High, so I'm not sure. I haven't received the cancellation notice, but Taste of Ireland Tavern Night at Noel Webster House, Take Five Party, WAC TV, March 20th, and Pancake Breakfast fundraiser for the Boy Scout troop at the United Methodist Fellowship Church. So stay tuned. I mean, it's though anything and everything is, might change. So again, as I want to thank the town manager for his leadership. It shows how important very professional, committed staff is when you have a situation like this, and people feel very confident that it's not a matter of if, but when we will start having, experiencing, or knowing that we're experiencing this. You know, it might be here, but we don't know it yet. So COVID-19. So I, again, I think, and Amy has done an amazing, amazing job. So there will be an Everbridge announcement going out tomorrow. I want to urge each and every one of you to get your family, your friends, your neighbors on Everbridge, be proactive, and register. When we had Storm Alfred, many calls were made to homes, when home phone lines. That's not the case anymore. People have cell phones. Their cell phones may not be registered on the Everbridge system, especially people that don't have school-aged children, because those are merged. We can't, you know, we need to make sure that we are accessing everybody, and the people that are most at risk are seniors and might be the least accessible to us, so we have to get the word out. I'd say the second most important thing is to make sure that you are prepared in your own homes, everybody is prepared in their own homes, for a couple of weeks in case you're in a situation where you've been exposed and you should not leave your home, and take care of your, or take care of a family member. And the other thing is, I think we're going to start accumulating names of volunteers who might be able to help if we have an impact of a more substantial nature that people, community can help. So much, much more to follow, and there's a lot of people wanting more information. We will share everything we have, but we might not have all the answers. So again, day-to-day, hour-by-hour in many cases, and thank you to the incredible effort being put in by all of our town staff, from custodial staff to the town manager. Okay. Any other announcements that might be canceled?
Yeah, I don't think this will be canceled. Ronnie Newton, you know, weha.com, along with Patty Albee, West Hartford Neighbor and Friends moderated by John Lyons, is hosting on Thursday at 5:30 a live Facebook call-in. Are you planning?
There's been some changes, because there's a lot of panelists, so there's been some changes. I think this is going to be really a public safety committed panel, and then response, elected officials will be on another panel. So there's been changes, too.
So there'll be a doctor, a nurse, some public officials. So it's Thursday, 5:30. You can find out more on West Hartford Neighbor and Friends, or ask Ronnie Newton. So it's in connection with weha.com, and I just thank you for offering your time and gathering some experts so that individuals can ask questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kerrigan. Anything else? All right. With that, we, reports from Corporation Counsel, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also want to thank both you and the town manager and our other public safety officials for the leadership that you've shown on coronavirus. My office is in the process of reviewing various legal standards in the event that an emergency declaration is required. At the request of the governor's office, we're also reviewing the need for, the potential need for various statutory and regulatory waivers. That was a request that went out to all 169 municipalities, and so we'll be working along with our various town departments to review those matters. I have a personnel update in my office. Assistant Corporation Counsel, Garmin Newsom, has accepted another position, and so he will be resigning as an assistant corporation counsel in our office. I had the opportunity to work with Garmin, both as a town counselor and also, more recently, as the corporation counsel, and I found him to be an extremely capable attorney who was very enjoyable to work with, and so we wish him well, and we will miss him. And if you know any attorneys who are looking for a job, please let me know. We will require an executive session tonight. It will be to review a document that is privileged by the attorney-client privilege, and there may be some action that we take when we come back from that executive session. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Corporation Counsel? Okay. Number 11A, and I'm going to ask my colleague to the right, Ms. Spade, to move that.
Thank you very much. We'd like to appoint Mr. Jeffrey Asia as an alternate to the Board of Assessment of Appeals for a term ending 12/31/2020.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 11B, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we appoint John Tucker as an alternate to council zoning for a term ending 12/31/2022.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. 11C, Ms. Spade.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert De La Chance as an alternate to the zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending...
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Number 13A, Mr. Davidoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. No communications, no petitions. Mr. Davidoff, executive session motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we enter an executive session in accordance with Section 1-200 (6) and 1-210 B10 of the General Statute to discuss written communications privileged by the attorney-client relationship.
Motion's been made in second, and this needs a two-thirds vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and I would like to invite Corporation Counsel, Deputy Corp Counsel, and the town manager to attend this executive session. Thank you. to attend this executive session. Thank you.
All right, I'm up. Where I grabbed the door.
She's good.
Wait a second, I just wanna grab the door.
She's fine.
No, she's fine.
Hey, I think Gina has the...
Oh.
Sorry Gina.
Okay, I'm reconvening us an open session. Do you have a... Well...
We do. It's you first to read.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In accordance with Section 1-225(c) of the General Statute, I move that we suspend the rules to consider your business out of the agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor: Aye. All those opposed: Motion carries. Mr. Davidoff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the adoption of resolution to amend the fiscal year 2019-2020 general fund budget to appropriate $25,000 for outside legal counsel.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor: Aye. All those opposed: Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor: Aye. All those opposed: Motion carries. Good night.